2015 Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Lieutenant Colonel Bernard Johnson, Civil Air Patrol retired Reverend of the First Church of the Nazarene. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening, bringing to you the city council. We want you to come and touch them, give them the courage and wherewith to bring to you the problems that we face in our city, in our state, in our city, in our country, to you, and ask for your direction and your guidance. We have asked Heavenly Father that you would fall afresh upon us, guide us and direct us in the days ahead, and Lord, we'll be careful to honor you and give you praise, for we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lieutenant Colonel Johnson. Employee recognition. Tonight, we're going to honor the Partners in Prevention Department. Would the Partners in Prevention Department representatives please come forward at this I'm going to ask Holly Fuller, our program manager, to introduce everyone. Would someone give Ms. Fuller the microphone, please? Then I'm going to be up there in just a minute, but I've got a lot to read, because there's a lot to this.
Thank you. Here before me is some of our staff, Patty Eason, Garland Hillhouse, Sherri Peck, LaDon Ingram, and Bonnie Hull. We also have in the audience some of our steering committee members. I'm going to ask them to stand, please. They're here to support us, and we meet with them on a regular basis. Thank you, Diana, Sandra, and Tim. We also have others in the room who mentor for us in our mentoring program, and others that serve on our East Texas Anti-Trafficking Team, Unity and Diversity Committee, and Ms. Snoddy is our liaison to Partners in Prevention, so I would ask those others to rise as well. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to share some information to show you all the tremendous impact that Partners in Prevention has on our community. Partners in Prevention has grown from the original Drug Task Force concept in the 1980s to its mission today, addressing community barriers by inspiring hope, connecting partners, and building trusting relationships that transform lives. Today, more than 300 volunteers mobilize and contribute 7,773 hours annually to make Longview a better place to live by serving on the Mentoring Advisory Council or mentoring more than 170 children in our six participating school districts, or supporting the Coalition of Drug-Free Youth, or working on the Unity and Diversity Committee, or supporting the East Texas Anti-Trafficking Team to address domestic minor sex trafficking, or helping those living in poverty navigate to more stability through the Bridges Out of Poverty Program, or giving back to the community through the Youth Action Committee, and finally, the Partners in Prevention Steering Committee help guide all of these initiatives. Through involvement from various sectors of the community and extensive support by federal and state grants, community foundation gifts, fundraisers, and general community support bringing more than $250,000, Partners in Prevention is working to create an environment which young people can grow up healthy, responsible, educated, self-sufficient, and drug-free. I'm not through, but I'm going to read that sentence again, because this is so important. PIP, Partners in Prevention, is working to create an environment in which young people can grow up healthy, responsible, educated, self-sufficient, and drug-free. If we said nothing else, that's a success story. We are not through. Recent accomplishments from some of the focused areas include the finalization of a strategic plan by the Bridges Out of Poverty Coalition made up of representatives from social service agencies, area churches, and governmental agencies, defining ways to eradicate poverty in Longview and to increase the quality of life for all citizens, and the Coalition for Drug-Free Youth recently conducted a community needs assessment in which 62 percent of the residents identified synthetic marijuana as the number-one concern for our youth ages 12 to 17, and prescription drug misuse is the biggest problem among the 26 to 65-year-old population. PIP is working closely with the Longview Police Department on plans for National Night Out on October 6th, and as of yesterday, we had 87 parties planned, and I know many of you are waiting, but plans are currently being made in partnership with Zonta for the third Walk-A-Mile-Her-Shoes. I know I can't wait again. Gotta be. That just gave me shivers. My feet are already hurting. But this event shows the support of East Texas Anti-Trafficking Team's initiatives. Please help me thank this dedicated group of professionals.
We also had Cindy Graham, who has joined us, and Sakita Brantley, who are also members of Partners in Prevention.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you for all that you do for our city. Honestly, that list is so impressive, but what you mean to the community is it's immeasurable. And you go through your daily work every day, and it's not glamorous, and no one sees you because you're behind the scenes, but you're making a difference in people's lives that will never be forgotten, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for helping Longview become a better place. So hats off to you guys, you girls, you ladies, and if you think I'm wearing those shoes again, you are so wrong.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at the Consent Agenda portion of the meeting tonight. Is there any items the council would like pulled off for separate discussion? Oh, yeah, we're going to get back to that in just a minute. A little out of order, I'm sorry, but we're going to go through the Consent Agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent Agenda passes. Thank you. I got out of order. My apologies. Thank you, City Manager. Okay, citizen comment. I only have one speaker card, Mr. Vic Verma.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council. Recently, the Environmental Protection Agency released the Clean Power Plan. It is considered the single most important step that we have taken in fighting global climate change. With this in mind, the Signs Initiative, Safe and Inviting Green Neighborhoods, is having an event on September 22nd at Broughton Recreation Center at 6:30. Our guest speaker is Dr. Al Armandares, who's with the Sierra Club. He's also the former EPA Region 6 Administrator. So we welcome the public and all of our elected leaders to the event. I wanted to add, there's many reasons we can have an event at Broughton Recreation Center. The main reason we actually are having outside of the fact that it's a great facility is that at Broughton, we will be having, in collaboration with the city of Longview, a glass recycling bin that the Signs Initiative will be responsible for. So we will have a glass recycling bin, a regular recycling bin, and a trash recycling bin. So for those who want to recycle glass, they will be able to take it to Broughton, and then we'll take care of the rest. We encourage all members of council, all elected officials, the public, to be at this important event. It's a great educational opportunity, and it's a great way to learn more about what we're doing from our standpoint on recycling as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that did not fill out a speaker card that would like to address the council? Thank you very much. Y'all just all here to hear us, huh? Like that. Okay, next is our budget item. Consider an ordinance adopting 2015 tax rate and levying said tax rate. Ms. Cohen.
Good evening. The property tax rate is to be set at 50.99 cents. This is not an increase to the rate and does not exceed the effective rate. To set the tax rate, a record vote is required by approval of this ordinance, and I can answer any questions you might have at this time.
Any questions in the council? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Now we're to zoning. Public hearing will be held to discuss application number S-15-01. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Willard. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a bakery with a drive-through service in general retail zoning. A specific use permit is required for a restaurant or bakery in general retail to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Morberly Avenue is a minor arterial which is appropriate for this type of use. Planning and zoning commission and staff recommends approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Public hearing is now open. Any discussion? Public hearing is now closed.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a public hearing to consider Z-15-15. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a rezone from multifamily 2 to general retail to build a gasoline station and convenience store. Through the site plan review process, staff will ensure all requirements are met, including buffering between adjacent residential properties seen here in the SF3 in this blue. High Street is a principal arterial roadway which is appropriate for this type of use. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. Planning and zoning and staff recommends approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now we will consider a public hearing on application PD-15-10. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a rezone from Plan Development General Retail to Plan Development General Retail to allow for an ATM for Citizens National Bank. The Plan Development Site Plan proposes an ATM that'll be approximately 90 square feet in size and have three stacking spaces. As you see, the stacking spaces are along here. The ATM will have a monument sign not to exceed 100 square feet in size and 10 feet in height located right here along Gilmer Road. Through the site plan process, the applicant will meet all other city of Longview codes. Hawkins Parkway and Gilmer Road, both, well, Hawkins Parkway is a minor arterial and Gilmer Road is a principal arterial. Both roadways are appropriate for this type of development as long as access management is followed. The ATM will not have, will utilize the existing driveway off of Gilmer Road. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. Planning and zoning and staff recommend approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions.
I guess you're not that worried about traffic right there. That's just, it's not a big drive in there and...
Yes, sir. There's three stacking spaces. Usually ATM, they don't stack that, you know, three stacking spaces usually. We don't have a stacking requirement, and so three stacking spaces does meet the city of Longview's requirements as far as parking.
Public hearing is now open. Any comments? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a public hearing to consider application PD-15-11. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone from Plan Development Single Family to Plan Development Two Family. Site plan for the Plan Development includes six two-family homes, which are duplexes, with a minimum lot size of 5,400 square feet. The minimum size for each side of the dwelling is 800 square feet in size with a total of 1,600 square feet for the total dwelling. The proposed two-family dwelling will have a maximum height of two stories with a minimum building setback of 30 feet in the front, 3 feet on the sides, and 10 feet on the rear. Each home will have a minimum parking spaces of four parking spaces for each duplex. Through the subdivision process, the development and the plat will be required to meet all of the other city of Longview requirements. Eastman Road is a principal arterial road which is appropriate for this type of development as long as access management is followed, and as you can see here, there is just one driveway onto Eastman Road 259. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding zoning. Planning and zoning commission and staff recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Public hearing is now open. Any speakers? Public hearing is now closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a public hearing to consider M-15-03. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The planning and zoning staff is proposing amendments to the zoning ordinance to add the use definition and create parking requirements for self-storage mini warehouse. Currently, the zoning ordinance has a use under special industrial processes, which is called storage and warehouse. Typically, we have classified self-storage mini warehouse under storage warehouse, which is typically an industrial, you see a lot of industrial warehouses, storage. Staff has interpreted this to mean that. It is not defined in the zoning ordinance. We've had several inquiries into allowing it in general retail. Under the current ordinance, it is not allowed in general retail. Staff is proposing a new use category within the zoning ordinance called self-storage mini warehouse, which would be allowed with a specific use permit in general retail zoning and by right in levy, light and heavy commercial zoning and light and heavy industrial districts. By adding this use, defining it, and creating parking requirements for self-storage mini warehouse, this will clarify the interpretation and allow for the self-storage mini warehouse to be located in general retail with a specific use permit. A specific use permit does have to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council for ultimate approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommended approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now closed. Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
I have a question. Ms. Choi, self-storage mini warehouse, what we're asking to do, is that consistent with what other communities our size are doing in regard to the zoning changes?
Yes. I've looked at some communities across Texas, some communities like Bryan College Station, they allow it, they allow it by right in retail. Tyler does not allow it in retail. They only allow it in light and heavy commercial. So it's kind of different, and all the communities are a little different. It's either allowed in retail. There are communities that have allowed it by right with a specific use permit like we're doing, so it's a little, all the communities are a little different, but we're kind of along the same path.
But the specific use permit makes it where there is control, basically. They have to report to planning and zoning first or go before P&amp;Z.
Yes, ma'am. They've got to go before P&amp;Z and City Council. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. One other question, Ms. Choi. I understand with the specific use permit, is this going to make this easier or more difficult for us to monitor this?
Um, I guess...
Because everyone's got to come before you, and it's going to be a subjective determination, correct?
Well, it goes before Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. They're not, they don't have to submit a site plan with a specific use permit. It's asking for the use to be allowed in retail, and so it goes before the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. They have to put in an application to staff.
Thank you very much. Okay, public hearing is, anyone else, please? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. Okay, we're to action items now. We consider a resolution accepting a donation of $10,000 from the Zonta Club of Longview for the purchase of police equipment in the amount of $8,900 and $1,100 in overtime pay for officers to be used for anti-sex trafficking projects. Ms. Shihaara.
Thank you, Mayor. I am really excited tonight to ask council to consider accepting a donation from the Zonta Club of Longview in the total amount of $10,000. We've had the pleasure of meeting with Chief Bishop, as well as Officers Brian and Stiles, in regards to hopefully helping them in their efforts to rid our community of sex trafficking. The Zonta Club of Longview began a campaign last year to raise awareness about the existence of this awful crime in our community, and what we found was a number of our citizens are not aware that this goes on. Unless it's affected you personally, you probably are not aware of what a big problem this can be, and our police force has been fighting it, so has the East Texas Anti-Trafficking Team, and the Zonta Club of Longview is hoping to bolster both of their efforts. So I would like to ask Chief, and I see Officer Brian, I saw Officer Stiles earlier, I don't know where she is, but I'd like to ask you guys to come up, as well as all of the Zontians that are present. We have, come on up, like, stand up and come up now. We have a check to present to you on behalf of the club.
And after council's perusal, I hope you will accept our donation of $10,000 to further your efforts.
We will. Our local thanks to the Zonta Club of Longview for this is a great partnership that increases the community and helps with training and equipment as well.
Well, you ought to make your way back to your seat. Thank you, Ms. Shihaara, and thank you to the Zonta Club for your support of our community. You know, we all know that education and awareness are keys to solving problems, and it's not enough just to see problems in our community. We have to try to find solutions to those problems, and this is part of that process, and applaud you all for all that you do and for the commitment that you make, and thank you for being here and providing this for our police force. So can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again. Okay, we have a resolution adopting a five-year capital improvements project allocating funds for 2015, 2016. Mr. Alton Bradley.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. I'll be giving the capital improvement program recommendations for next fiscal year, next budget year 2016. A little of the background, the policies were adopted in 2000 for capital purchases, specifically non-recurring, infrequent major purchases consisting primarily of acquisition of land, construction or addition of facilities, major repairs of $100,000 or more, major equipment purchase of $100,000, and with an expected life equal to the life of the bond, and studies for projects from master plans. There was also a ranking system put together based on priorities and urgencies. Priorities ranked one through four depending on mandates or safety through special needs and special expansions. Project urgency factors, ranking one through four as being essential or down to four deferrable. These scores are put together to come to a total, and that total's used to rank the projects, with the lowest being the most important. We use several plans throughout the city to come up with our CIP lists. The most recent is, has been adopted as a comprehensive plan. We have water and wastewater master plans, as well as parks, the drainage plan. We have a text dot off-system bridge inspection that they do about every two years. Our metropolitan transportation plan, as well as our previous CIP list. The CIP that was adopted last year, 8.7 million, just an update on some of these projects, fairground improvements, the right-of-way and utility adjustments for George Ritchie extension, those are complete. The animal shelter, as you know, is under construction. A portion of the 2015 wastewater system has been completed at Eastman Lake Creek, while the High Street, you know, the system improvements is still under design. The 2015 water system improvements is also under design. For this year, we are recommending our projects in drainage. We have a bridge improvement project of estimate of $700,000 to repair or replace a culvert structure at Greystone Road and Grace Creek. We also have drainage improvement project. We have two of them totaling $300,000 to construct improvements or purchase property. The two locations are listed, 203 Kimberly or 1308 Junkle. This is a photo of the Greystone and Grace Creek location. There is a double six-foot culvert. It's a metal culvert. This is an example of a, of a project that's been on our list. It's been noted as having problems, but due to the recent rains that we had this last spring, you can see some repairs that are current, you can see some repairs of the past. It's just a deteriorated culvert, and that's $700,000. These drainage projects, the Greystone and Grace Creek, that's at the north portion of the city, the two house flooding problems, 203 Kimberly, that will be a project for improving existing infrastructure, and we're proposing a home purchase at 1308 Junkle for repetitive house flooding. Our projects for drainage are, the $1 million for this coming year will be funded through the one-quarter cent sales tax. Our parks project for coming year, The Green, it is an environmental-friendly event venue. It has a walking trail, pavilion, music node, some classrooms, restrooms. It's located at Spur 63 and State Highway 31, as well as adjacent to Grace Creek. This is a conceptual drawing that's been put together by the planner, MHS Spencer Architects. It is estimated at 1.2 million. We have already received notification from Texas Parks and Wildlife that we have a grant of $400,000. They requested that we match with local funds, another $400,000, and that's coming from Gregg County, LEDCO, and City of Longview, each participating with $100,000. Keep Longview Beautiful is making up a difference at $500,000, which will include private funding as well. Facilities project recommended for next year, we have the rodeo grounds paving improvements project estimated at $320,000. It's to provide paving, safety, and accessible upgrades to the new rodeo pavilion and the restrooms that were just installed under the previous year. Includes ramps and parking area. It also includes improvements to help maintain the facility, as well as provide those accessible Currently, the pavilion only has millings around it. We are proposing to put pavement all the way from the grandstands to the north, down to the pavilion, also provide a better access between the grandstands and the restrooms, as well as the pavilion. It also includes additional paving for the staging area on the west end of this. It includes some paving under the grandstands. under the grandstands. That project is to be funded by the hotel occupancy tax. It's estimated at $320,000. Our recommended transportation projects for next year include a Eastman and Fourth Street intersection traffic signal. This is estimated at $200,000. It's for signal at Eastman and the new extension of Fourth Street. This is recommended to be funded with savings from our 2011 street bond, where we have some savings. We are also entering into a developer participation agreement for a developer at that location who's proposed to pay half of that. Our wastewater projects recommended for next year, we have $900,000 identified, primarily for the Watley Road Lift Station and a forced main extension. It also includes line repairs to existing mains that are beyond their existing life and maintenance. These lines are located at Franklin, Evergreen, and Marion. The Watley Road Lift Station is to the west here. It includes some additional line, some forced main additions as well. Our wastewater projects are funded through the operations and maintenance budget, and we have $900,000 for that. Our water projects for next year, we also have the $900,000 from the same funding source, operation and maintenance, to install new water mains, replace existing lines that are undersized or beyond their, their maintenance life. The lines at Arkansas Jane III and Payden are either two-inch or three-inch, very inadequate for, for today's needs. The lines on Williams and Kentucky Rayburn, Wiley and Jewell are six-inch. They're just beyond their, their useful life. We also include, as a water improvement project for next year, the George Ritchie Extension. We have to adjust some utilities for the text dot project. We have to lower a 24-inch line, as well as some 12-inch water lines. These are the location of our line projects for water, replacement projects for next year. This just gives you the location of our adjustment for Greystone and McCann for our 24-inch transmission Required funds, 1.2 million. This is becoming out of the operations and maintenance budget, $900,000. We also have a utility fund, capital reserve, to fund the remainder of the George Ritchie line adjustments at $325,000. This is a summary of our projects that we are recommending, totaling $4.8 million for next year.
Do you have any questions? Questions, council?
I do.
Please.
The properties that you referenced in regard to flooding, you said repeated flooding. In those two homes, one of the properties or both, are we, are you asking to buy those two properties?
The property at 1308 Johnquill?
Yes.
We are recommended to purchase that. It has, it's had a history of flooding. It's also had a history of a severe erosion problem. It's been on our list for drainage improvements. The project at 203 Kimberly, it has recently flooded, but it's flooded on, on a couple occasions.
Okay, and I'm asking that question because I want a little bit of clarification on repeated flooding, because I have several streets in my district where there are homes that have repeatedly flooded. So, for the sake of the public, can you clarify how they can get on that list, or how we ascertain which properties we're actually going to look at for capital improvement, in terms of like drainage? Because that's, that's a big deal, I know for me.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know it's a long list.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that.
We have a drainage needs list, and my office keeps that list. We have over 500 project, no, I wouldn't say project. We have 500 properties. We have files of completed projects, projects that have needs, and if anybody has needs to, to discuss, you know, home, there's, there's three levels. There's home flooding, there's, you know, there's severe erosion, there's nuisance flooding. We have, there's, there's several categories. Our home flooding is our highest priority. Repetitive is, is more than once. If, if we find that it's a problem due to the local conditions that we can't control, sometimes it's a stopped-up culvert, and we can, we can fix that. But they can get in touch with me at Public Works, City Engineers Office. We visit all our flooding complaints and make a file of it.
Alton, don't they also need to not be in the floodplain? Because if they're in the floodplain, they have flood insurance available. So, the homes that we're recommending purchase of, they're outside of the floodplain, so that insurance is not available to them. That's what I understood.
Yes, that's, that's correct. If, if you are located in a floodplain, we'll recommend they purchase the, the flood insurance, because we can't change the floodplain.
And that's an issue that we run into with Iron Creek Bridge and those properties there. But there are also properties that are not located in the floodplain that are, I know specifically in South Longview. So, what I would ask is that, maybe we need to take a look at some of those properties for the future, maybe the next go-around, because I don't, I don't know that everything's being captured. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Along the same lines, are these houses that are flooding, is it the city's fault that they're flooding, or is it where the houses were initially located, they shouldn't have been located there? Are we buying them because, just to be good guys, or is it because it's our fault that they're flooding?
We have a drainage master plan. It was adopted, I believe, in 89 or 92. But it does identify priorities for how we address flood properties. They are looked at. Some of them are looked at from the standpoint, is, is the city responsible? Is the private owner responsible? Is it a private problem? The, and that's how we identify it in those files. We have, in, in our five-year master plan, we do have other projects that are listed. The two that are on there are just, you know, the home flooding is a high priority, and we, we address it that way. If, if it is the city, we try and address it that way. But it's, I think it's a combination of the master plan that looked at home flooding as issue. I believe when it was adopted, there were over 500 home flooding issues, and those were probably a combination of all those.
When, as I understand it, because I met with the homeowner for Johnquill, and as I understood kind of the process, part of it is, is the cost that the city would have to incur to alter the drainage away from their private property, which is our responsibility, is that higher than purchasing their home? So, I know at least in that particular neighborhood, we purchased at least one other lot, because the improvements we'd have to incur, which would be the city's responsibility to move that water away from them, would be a higher cost than just purchasing their home. So, in this instance, it's just a cheaper alternative for us, but it would be our responsibility to do that drainage work, to avoid them. And particularly, when they're not in a floodplain, because as a homeowner, they really wouldn't have had advance notice unless the purchase, the person they were purchasing from had told them, which of course wouldn't have happened, probably. But anyway, so as I understood it, it would be our responsibility, and it's just cost-benefit analysis, and that we decide to purchase the home, because it would be less cost to us than doing the required work.
Yes.
Correct me if I've said that wrong.
It is a cost-benefit analysis.
Counsel, we obviously know that every district has drainage needs. That's just part of being in the city. But I do recognize that, you know, Ms. Snoddy, Ms. Williams, you all's districts suffer the worst, in my opinion. And I know, David, your district does too, in areas. But I really want us to take a really close look at where we can spend our money, and really do some good for people that, you know, pay their taxes and deserve to be taken care of. And I think you all have done a fantastic job of prioritizing. I want us to continue that, and I want us to really look closely, and I want, I want us as, I want you all as council to seek out those areas that need improvement, because that's how we make the city better across the board. But we can't just leave it up to the citizens to complain all the time. We have to go out there and do your due diligence in your, in your neighborhoods, and, and find out where the problems are, and then let us bring it to the council, so we can put those on the list. Because if they don't ever get on the list, they will never get done. It may be a long list, but at least you want to be on that list. So, I appreciate the concerns, and thank you. And, and Mr. Bradley, it's, it's great having you. It's the first time we've had you up here since we were elected, and it's nice having you in the council chambers.
Thank you, Mayor, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, any questions on this issue? May I have a motion?
Ms. Dupre?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So noted. Okay. Well, that is all of our action items. Now it is time for our book club discussion. Indulge me for just a moment.
Hey, guys. I'm ready to kick off this book club. Thanks so much for joining me on this journey. I want to share with you things that really impacted me from the book. So, let's get started. I love so much this segment from page 11. "I believe that a person can reach a certain level of success without being particularly special. But to get really, really big, to reach the kind of stratospheric success we're talking about, people need to have something on the inside, something that's genuine. Longview, what I want for us is stratospheric success, and I believe we aren't going to get there until we start seeking opportunities to genuinely give of ourselves to our friends and neighbors in this community. So, let's get started. It's time to be all in and be a go-giver."
Okay. I want to say, Monday night's discussion with the community was amazing. It was far beyond my expectations. It was far more than we could keep up with. We had 125 responses in an hour's time, and people just, it just kept going. So, and I appreciate the city staff that was involved in discussions. I recognize names, and it was also interesting as, some of those names that I recognized that I grew up with, I would have never thought they'd engage in a book club. They probably never thought I'd engage in a book club either. But it was great to see participation from all walks of life. We had young, old, every station was there, and it was very nice to see that, that, that participation. And I know you all, I hope, have read the book. I hope you all are seeing the, the, the benefit that this can bring to our community, the way we can utilize it in our everyday lives, with our interactions with our citizens, in the way we treat the people around us, and the way we conduct ourselves. And that's the intention and the purpose, what we're doing this for, and I'll take any discussion, questions that you might have, or anything that you all might want to add.
I wanted to add, my, my favorite part of those first 20 pages was, on page 15, if y'all would like to follow along, I feel like I'm at Sunday School, that in life, you often don't get what you want, but you get what you expect. And part of his point was, the world treats you as you expect to be treated, and I have certainly found that to be true in my own life, and it is so applicable to us as city council officials. And one of the things I love about the City of Longview is how wonderful our staff is. I mean, if you contact them, if a citizen contacts them with a problem, I have always found that they are responsive and helpful and positive, and they have always been that way to me. So, it's just a really wonderful reminder of how I need to respond when I'm contacted, because not everybody is super excited when they call me, or, you know, they've had something that caused them to call me they were troubled enough about. And it is so important that my response is positive back to them, so that they walk away having a positive response from our city officials. So, that was my favorite part of that chapter.
I love it when you say something. I had it underlined in my book, too. That's good. You know, one thing I want to, I want to point out, there are a number of good quotes in here, but here's something that's very important. People will do business with and refer business as though, to those people they know, like, and trust. And that's where, that's where we want to be. We want to be that, that city that people know, like, and trust, that want to come and do business with us. I think that's how we change how we're perceived, because like it or not, perception is reality. And so, this is an exercise in changing perception into reality. And, you know, you know, the first, the first law in this book, the law of value, says your true worth is determined by how much more you give in value than you take in payment. So, what it really is saying is, your worth is determined by how much you give, not by how much you receive. And so, I just want us to focus on that, and I want us to think about it, and to think about ways we can implement that in all that we do up here as elected officials. All we do as employees to the city, because we are as well, employees of the city. And so, these are things that we can do to make a difference and make a change, and I think this is going to continue to grow. It's, it's, already, I could say, it's overwhelming Monday night, and we've had, we've had some incredible outreach from other people, including the authors of the book. The authors of the book have contacted us, and they're, they're involved, and they're engaged, and it's really, it's really going to be exciting. So, anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Allen.
One of the things that this book brings out, and it's very helpful, occasionally we read these things, and we say, well, does that, can that apply to me? And the answer is yes, it can apply to me if you want it to apply to you. Now, I've got an old saying that I've come up with a long time ago, that primarily has to do with the council or whatever you do. It's, "Check your ego at the door." And that's something that's, that's hard for us to do. But when we come up here, when we come in this room, and when we practice our responsibilities here, it's not about our ego. Your ego needs to stop when you come through the door. One thing, another thing here, you have to, and it's hard to do, you have to understand, I am not number one. You are number one. And when you work with people, one of the things I've always tried in my business life is, you don't use the word "I." That's the worst thing you can use. It's about what we can do for you. And that's, and I think that's one of the main reasons we're up here, and I hope the city staff, which the ones I've worked with do understand, that it's not up here, it's not about "I." It's about what we can do for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Well, I want to thank all of y'all for participating, for indulging in this, and I thank the citizens, I thank the staff. You know, someone asked me a question two days ago. They said, you know, what's the purpose? This is kind of silly, isn't it? Who do you think you're going to reach by doing something like this? You know what I said? If I reach one person, it's a success. If you change one person's perception, it's a success. My question is, let me answer that with a question. What do we have to lose by doing it? 10 minutes of discussion? An hour of reading? We have nothing to lose, Longview. So, thank you. I appreciate the discussion. Look forward to the next time. Mr. Willard.
Mayor, I just wanted to comment, in case you didn't know, on Facebook, my name is Cindy Willard. Just so you'll know. That's all I wanted to say.
That's great. Well, thank you all so much. Look forward to next time. Okay, items of community interest. Before we start, can we excuse Mr. Moore?
Move to excuse Councilmember Ed Moore.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Ms. Snoddy?
Nothing.
Ms. Williams?
I want to remind everyone about the Signs Initiative on Tuesday, September 22nd, at Broaden Recreation Center. It's really a great program. Please come and join in that at 6:30. Also, I want to say thank you to Councilwoman Ishihara and Zonta. Zonta has done so much for our community for so many years, and you were the first to step up against sex trafficking. That is a big deal, and people still have no idea that it exists in our brilliant, bright community. And thank you, ladies, for taking the initiative in that. And last but not least, Red Oak Baptist Church will erect a historical marker on Saturday, September 12th, this Saturday, at 10:00 a.m. This is a very historic event, so please come out and join. No, I'm not a member there, but I am a member at large sometimes.
Thank you. Ms. Ishihara?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Wright?
Nothing this week.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir. First, I would like to apologize for my absences, and I'd like to explain a little bit. It's kind of emotional. My wife and I celebrate our 50th wedding anniversary this year. Thank you. I don't know how she's put up with me that long. But we had some trips planned, and then we've taken several trips. She has three sisters. One's passed away, and we've taken several trips with them, but it's just, it's, it's, like I said, it's actually, it's this month is our anniversary, but we've taken several trips, and I want to apologize again for the time we've been absent, but I just felt that I owed her the opportunity to do, you know, whatever she wanted to do. And I've enjoyed the traveling with her, and I apologize again for the time we've missed. Thank you.
Ms. Brown, you have nothing to apologize for, sir. Congratulations to you and your wife on being the exception to the rule in marriage these days. Thank you very much. Congratulations to you both. Mr. Willard?
Well, thank you, sir.
Okay. National Night Out is Tuesday, October 6th. National Night Out is Tuesday, October 6th. Register your party online at longviewtexas.gov/nno. As we mentioned earlier, as of yesterday, there are 87 neighborhood parties planned. And I think last year, we just had, we had 80, didn't we?
Less.
Oh, was it 70 or 80?
70.
70? Okay. Okay, remember this, last year we had 70, and we were ranked 19th in the nation. This year, we're 87 already. So we're going to move up in the rankings. That's what we want to do, always want to move up. That is so, so good. Keep that up, girls, boys, I love it. Okay. Longview Tinkers is having a barbecue cook-off fundraiser this Saturday, September 12th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Flying Feathers Ranch off Highway 300. Please plan to attend if you can. Okay, I have three more things. I'm going to do them in this order. Survey says, survey this week, this was a fun one. In comparison to neighborhood cities, where do you see the need for the most improvement in Longview? Our choices were cultural arts and development, downtown urban development, retail shopping development, more restaurants, or entertainment? We had a very, very large number of participants in this survey this week. Forty-six percent of this survey said entertainment, which is what I would assume will be the answer. So be ready, Longview. Next survey will be, because these are helpful, I know, I know some people think this is, but I'm telling you, we're having a lot of people participate in these surveys. We're getting a lot of input from the community, more than we have that vote in elections, if you really want to know the truth. It is what it is. But, so now that we know entertainment's big on our mind, let's find out how, what, and where. Okay? We're going to be talking about that soon as well. Okay? Now, what food are you most looking forward to enjoying at this year's Gregg County Fair? Funnel cakes, nachos, cotton candy, corn dogs, or turkey leg? Forty-seven percent, my favorite funnel cake, all the way. So good responses. Thank you all for participating, and I know you might not think it's a lot, but these are very valuable tools that we can utilize to see what we're looking for in our community and ways to try to develop our community. And I don't know if we can even say it. Can we say it?
You bet.
These things do pay off. What was one of our first surveys? What would you like to see in Longview? Waterpark, zipline, outdoor shopping, Topgolf? Overwhelmingly, our response was waterpark. Today, Splash Kingdom came to Longview to discuss a waterpark in Longview. So I can tell you, ladies and gentlemen, these surveys do make a difference. Now, how they found out about it, I don't know. Maybe we sent them an email. I don't know. But I'm just saying, these things are invaluable information for us as a community to know what we're looking for, so we know what direction to go, because you all realize, we can go in a million different directions. But having good, solid input from the people that'll take the time to do these surveys gives us a great direction on where to go. So thank you for participating, I appreciate it very much, and you'll keep getting surveys because I think they're helpful. And Mr. Willard, thank you for spearheading that today, and I know that I'm looking forward to the discussions that will ensue. Thank you, sir. Okay. Next. Has no one wondered what all this is up here? Everyone has, haven't they? That's good. Okay. I've heard from a lot of you this week regarding public safety and your desire to back the blue, support our public servants. And so this week, I've spoken to Fire Chief JP Stillman and Police Chief Mike Bishop about tangible ways the community can support them. They shared with me that they're always in need of bottled water, sports drinks. The fire department said they frequently donate small battery-operated smoke alarms and CO2 detectors to people who cannot afford them. The police department has need for new car seats when they issue citations for children not properly fashioned in the seats. So this gave me an idea. Why not challenge the city of Longview to do this? So now we have, we've had Mayor Max surveys, Mayor Max Book Club, Mayor Max, now we have Mayor Max Challenge. So my challenge to Longview is I want to see us dropping off these types of supplies at the police stations, the fire stations, to show our support for our public servants and to show our support for the community. And it doesn't matter if you drop off the wrong thing to the wrong place, we will get it to the right location. So, Longview, let's come together. This is one more way where we can come together and we can support our community, we can support our police and our fire, and you know what? They deserve it. So thank you, I hope you'll accept this challenge, I hope to see you there. I've already participated. I'm counting on you. Okay. Now last, I want to take some time now to speak about our current public safety climate in Longview. The issue is the most pressing issue in everyone's mind, as it has been all year. I visited at Lincoln with Chief Bishop, and he has outlined a plan with me to make Longview safe. There are many pieces to this puzzle of public safety, and I thought it would be appropriate to me, for me to share some of those pieces that we are working very hard on right now. The first piece of the puzzle, which I feel is very well underway to being accomplished, that's returning our new officers, returning and recruiting new officers to a full police force of 172. Updating officer pay to be equivalent with market standards, recruiting new cadets from area academies, colleges, and job fairs, retaining seasoned officers to maintain a tenured and well-trained department. I'm very pleased to report that we are on a pace to have a total of 170 officers enlisted or committed to join within the Longview Police Department by October the 12th. It has been over five years since we've had anywhere close to this number of officers protecting our community. So Chief, that's a wonderful, wonderful start. But one piece of the puzzle. Second piece of the puzzle, community policing. Our par officers, police area representatives, are in several neighborhoods which are going door-to-door in the grassroots efforts to get to know neighbors and bridge trust and communication. We have Community Watch Party with National Night Out coming up on October 6th. We're hosting Citizen Police Academies, including a Spanish language class. Third piece of the puzzle, we're increasing patrols in known crime areas. Officers are increasing their presence in areas with known drug and gang problems. We are increased, we have increased police visibility in known drug and gang areas focusing on lawful detentions. We have a heightened focus on eliminating gangs and drug activity plaguing our community. Piece number four, we are focusing on neighborhood revitalization. We have code enforcement sweeps that have already taken place in the West Longview and South Longview, focusing on cleaning up blighted neighborhoods to increase community pride and be less inviting to criminal activity. We're encouraging neighbors to report code violations. Our fifth piece of the puzzle is increasing citizen education by encouraging citizens to report suspicious activities, communicating ways to contact police via Crime Stoppers, our par officers, and the sort. I ask you, Longview, please be patient with us. This problem will take time to resolve. Our crime problem did not happen overnight, and it won't be solved overnight. All these things are mere pieces of a public safety puzzle for Longview, and likely, we will find more pieces necessary in the future. But we cannot have one without the other. They must all be focused on the same time for us to be successful. Some of these will take longer than others to achieve, but have confidence in knowing that we are working on each piece diligently to make Longview whole. We, as a council, we will not hide from this issue. We will not pretend that it does not exist. We will work together as a community to bring peace to Longview. Thank you for being here. This meeting is adjourned.